Recording. All right, it is six thirty on October twenty-sixth, is that correct? Yes. And I'll call the Board of Directors for the Tuck Willa School District Meeting to order. All directors are present, Superintendent is with us as well as other Cabinet members, and I would like to welcome all the guests that are joining us tonight. Dave, would you offer a land recognition for us?
Sure, we in the Tuck Willa School District acknowledge that the land where we teach, collaborate, learn, and play is the traditional land of the first people of Seattle, the Duamish and Mokasup people, past and present, in honor with gratitude the land itself and the Duamish and Mokasup tribes. As a public school district, we have a responsibility for the stewardship of this land, and we recognize the Duamish and Mokasup people who have been living and working here since time immemorial.
Thank you, that's an important thing to always keep before us. Approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion around the agenda tonight? All right, those in favor of this agenda, please say yes.
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 And if anyone is not in favor, please say no. Okay, everybody said yes, thank you. So we'll move through this agenda. Deb, do we have any public comment tonight?
We do not.
All right, thank you. Please, public, know that you can speak to us through this method or personally or any other way of reaching out to us to share your thoughts, your hopes, your dreams, even your complaints, and we will do our best to address each one as they come to us. Superintendent Report, Dr. Herndon.
Good evening, thank you, and goodie hello to everybody. Board Directors, staff, and community folks who may be tuning in for this evening. So I wanted to touch on a few areas that we're currently working on, a few things that we're pretty excited about, more information will be coming out to our staff students in public over the next coming weeks, and information that I've already shared with the board in some of these areas. So number one, we're very excited as soon as we are able to get the FDA approval for student vaccinations to start offering vaccinations for students ages five to eleven. We just have to wait for the FDA approval, I was reading an article today that talked about that being one step closer. So I think with that availability, certainly we'll continue to help with the COVID situation, and hopefully we'll be in a better position for those who choose, students who choose to get that, or family members who choose that for their students. We have been offering a vaccination clinic roughly once every three weeks since the spring, and what that allows is for people to come in if they're getting their first shot, to get their follow-up shot, or now even a booster shot. So we will continue to offer that, we've been partnering with King County Department of Health and Costco to provide those shots. So we will continue to do that, generally we put out an announcement and they've been available at Foster High School and the auxiliary gym. So we're excited by this possibility because I think that's going to be good news for our community. I did want to touch on one item that also had come to us via a couple of board members contacting me, thank you for letting me know. We did reapply for a fresh fruit and vegetables grant. We have had that in the past for several years, there are several school districts who applied for that. Last year, there were some challenges with that particular application to get that renewed. So the initial allocation coming to us for that grant was substantially lower than it has been in the past. So our connection to that, Mr. Watt, in the Child Nutrition Services area, and Ms. Birdsong have been working on resubmitting that application and getting a higher allocation. So that is in process, so as soon as we get that higher allocate, we're expecting a higher allocation to come out as a result of this. So when that comes out, we will continue with that program to allow the availability of fresh fruits and vegetables for our students and families. So it's always great to be able to eat fresh food, food as much as possible, and fruits and vegetables are a great way to balance out your diet. Additionally, we are looking at, I've been giving updates during this time and the race and equity time to talk about community conversations regarding our SROs. So I just had a conversation yesterday with some people at King County who will be assisting us in facilitating these conversations. So we had a survey that was done last spring, and we are going to follow that up with different opportunities for different stakeholders to be able to speak to the ideas around the SRO, and with that, we'll have a report that's then submitted to the board based on the results of those conversations. We can take a look at that and decide if it's program we want to continue with the way it is, modify the way it is, or discontinue that. That's typically the case when a recommendation comes up, no matter what it is, SRO or anything else, either continue with it, modify it, or stop, cease, reject it. So it, I think it's going to be a very good conversation, the people facilitating the conversation are really good about looking at this. One group is doing a comparison in King County between districts or among districts, I should say, regarding the SRO program and the effectiveness of SROs. So I think being a part of this study will be helpful, not only for our community but for others, and so I look forward to that. As soon as we get the dates available, we'll make sure that we're well-publicized. Should be about mid-November, so it's coming up, I know this process is taking a little longer than we wanted, but I think it's going to be a good process and we'll get the opportunity to hear and read the report directly from students so that they can be in their stakeholder group staff, and then community will be open to everybody. So we'll get that out and available, we'll make sure it's well-publicized in multiple languages, and make sure that we have translators available to help with the conversations at that time. This, just kind of an update, the weather this last week is reminding us that we are entering into a shift in our weather patterns. So between rain, snow, inclement weather, we're just reviewing all of our policies and procedures around if we run into an event where we have to cancel school doing the notification, so we're making sure that all people are as up-to-date as possible on how they get notified, both staff and the community. So we're updating those procedures right now to make sure that everything's where it needs to be, we'll make sure parents, staff, and students can access that in multiple languages so that we can put that out, we want to make sure people are well-aware, and the only reason we really cancel school is mostly because of safety concerns. If we don't have electricity, it's hard for us to keep the learning environment at a safe temperature, obviously if roads are impassable, that's not safe for people to drive or to walk to school. So those are the things that we're looking at coming up, so those are the shifts that are coming up, lots of information coming out over the next couple of weeks. So please stay tuned, and if there are ever any questions, please feel free to contact myself or the office, we have lots of staff who hopefully can respond to you as quickly as possible. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Herndon. Our COVID-19 report, are you doing that, Dr. Herndon, or?
Tonight, actually, we're going to have Mr. Dragunov to do that. Our nurse, Ms. Mestra, was not available for this evening, so Mr. Dragunov's going to assist tonight.
Hello, good evening, everyone. The first piece that we are bringing to you is that we are proud to announce that we are continuing with our Community Vaccination Clinic Series in conjunction with King County Department of Health and Costco Pharmacy, as Dr. Herndon led with. So our latest, just to give you some information, our latest was held last Thursday, October twenty-first, from two-thirty to four-thirty at Foster High School in the auxiliary gymnasium. So in addition to the Pfizer doses one and two, we also offered the Pfizer booster, and it was the first time that one of the clinic series was able to bring the Pfizer booster. We'd like to highlight that Principal Blanton and Social Studies Teacher Ms. Andrea Gambola centered student skill development in the Social Studies Department as they facilitated the preparation, planning, and communication of this event. And it was well-attended, over fifty injections were administered by Costco Pharmacy. The next event in the series will take place on Thursday, November tenth, starting at two-thirty PM with boosters and possibly flu shots. Meanwhile, we are monitoring the upcoming implementation of the five-to-eleven-year-old COVID-19 vaccine Pfizer, and we anticipate that the formula will be ready for implementation by the end of next week, and we have tentatively planned a few options for administration. Again, the work is in conjunction with King County Department of Health and Costco Pharmacy. We're centering student and community needs, all conversations include strategies for eliminating barriers that may interfere with equitable access for all. And for example, these includes assumptions that we're making as educators, education, language, location, transportation, we're working on a plan for that, the forms that they fill out, and day and time of the access, or of the event. Next order, or next topic that we have that we're bringing to you today is with the support of Debbie Core and Nurse Hannah Maestro. We are continuing to center our community knowledge by maintaining accurate COVID-19 impact information on the school district website and under the COVID tab, COVID-19 tab. We currently have four classes in quarantine, and they're all at different stages in their timeline, again, these are elementary classrooms. And since the entire classes are in quarantine, all students are engaging remotely while the teacher is broadcasting, either from the classroom or remotely. And that sums up this week's report.
Thank you, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Dragunov? All right, well, well done.
Thank you.
All right, for director's reports tonight, I have asked the directors to go in order of their district. So if a couple of you didn't look at your email yet, I'm sorry about that, but we will go by district number. We do not have anybody in District One right now, so we'll start with District Two. I'm going to suggest that we describe a little bit about where our district is, where we live, and how we fit into the district, and then just our district, our director report. So since I'm District Two, I will start. And if you don't know your district, I'm sorry, it's me and then Dr. Apola Ryder, or Director Edna, and then Director Dave. So that's the order that we'll go in. For me, a couple of things that I'm just excited about, both as a grandmother and as a school board director, the vaccines for the young kids. It just feels like we're going to make a big jump here in safety for our community, and I'm looking forward to getting some kids protected a little more than we've been able to. And I think we will look to have vaccine clinics in multiple locations, not only at schools, but in multiple locations, so our families will have a generous way of accessing. Also, I went to a workshop on proposed new science curriculum, breathing easier, I think it was called, and there's a follow-up on that this week, it looked very interesting. Mostly an elementary curriculum, and we talked about how that would work with our elementary kids, what reading levels were involved with this curriculum, and it's a small enough working group that designed this curriculum that I think it would be great for our district because it can be rolled out and adapted very easily. They do use a race inequity lens, although we would need to, once again, see how it fits with our lens, but that's something that is a possibility. And it would be, well, that's all I'll say on that. The other one that I'm particularly interested in right now is the multiple languages that Ms. Chin is working on, and I look forward to following up with that a little bit more. I was on vacation last week, and when I'm on vacation with my kids, I'm staying with a PTA president, my daughter's the PTA president of her, the school where her second grader goes, and so I get a different perspective all the time, listening to what it's like to be a parent and working through a PTA, and I always appreciate that, that different lens that she's working through, and how it feels to be a parent trying to make things happen in her school district. The only other thing I wanted to say is that we continue to be a resource center here in my church building for social workers and our liaisons to bring families from the schools in that they identify that have needs for clothing and coats and household goods, so we're going to be able to do that for a few more weeks until we have to kind of put that away for the year. So if you know of families that haven't been identified yet, we have quite a bit of stuff here still to help families get set up, and we're also set up to help with refugees when they start coming in. And that is my report, thank you very much, and I will pass it off to Dr. Apola Ryder.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Bridget Apola Ryder, she/her/hers, and in terms of thinking about how I show up in the community and where I show up in the community, first and foremost, I show up as my identity as a mom to scholars in the district, and in terms of sort of like positionality, thinking about that really, our communities have been based on our schools that we've attended over the years, and so I'll just share kind of that journey, kind of where my kids are now. My son started Cascade Views Specialized Needs Preschool, and then we went to Thorndike, and then my daughter started at Thorndike. We, my daughter now just moved up to Showalter, and my son just moved up to Foster, and so that's kind of where we're at, and when I think about families in our district, oftentimes we have multiple kids that are in different places, and so that despite the building, we're in many places, and depending on where our kids are at in their developmental process. And so that's kind of how I think about proximity and positionality in the district is really just where our family is at the time and what our kids are going through at the time. So for my director report, and Debbie, you don't have to post it if you don't want to share it, but I will share with our community, this is my, I think my third time or fourth time, I've prepared a document with all my updates, because in my updates, I share a lot of resources that I'm privileged to get access to, and I want to be able to make sure that all of us here on the board, as well as community members, have access to those resources and information. Oftentimes, I'll put people's contact information in there, or names of programs and things like that, so even if ever, you know, folks aren't ever able to make the meeting, at least there's that resource available, and it's just good practice to hold me accountable to make sure I'm doing good work in the community. So I'll go ahead and share, it's been, as Dr. Herndon said, it has been a busy time in our communities right now. I'm going to go ahead and pull open my director report real quick here. So I was in a couple meetings even today, both had to do with parent networks and how we bring in our families into the buildings, into our district, into our decision-making. And the, one of the most powerful statements I heard, I want to share with everybody else, nothing about us without us, nothing about us without us. So I think that that statement just really resonates with me because nothing about us can be placed on us without us. So we cannot make decisions that impact scholars, families, employees, without our communities being part of the decision-making process. We, with the power and privilege at the district or building level, cannot be okay with current steps in decision-making that is part of business as usual in our district. In the book How to Be an Anti-Racist, Ibram X. Kendi warns, as a decision-maker and leader in the district with power and privilege, we must assume that our policies and how we implement our policies are racist, and if we're not practicing anti-racist leadership, that's what will happen. Since the beginning, education as a field has perpetuated structural racism. Currently, we are leaders in the district, conducting business meetings and making decisions through systemically dominant white supremacist culture and leadership practices. And so that's, I share some resources there for folks, if you're curious about what, where that comes from and what that means, I've got to share some other things with you this evening, one is House Bill thirteen fifty-six. So this year, the Washington State joined a national movement by passing House Bill thirteen fifty-six prohibiting the inappropriate use of Native American mascots in schools without proper tribal consultation. According to the bill, consultation must occur by the end of the year or mascots need to change. And I shared out with Director Larson and Dr. Herndon the latest issue of our WASDA policy and legal news that comes out to all of us as board directors that actually highlights that bill, and there's quite a bit of work being done. This bill does impact our district, it impacts Thorndike Elementary and our current mascot that we have there, so I just want to share that out to the community. The King County Directors advocating for equitable sped funding in Washington State. So this past week, about eight or nine directors from different districts here in King County has formed, and we're going to be drafting a letter and talking about strategy about advocating for equitable sped funding in Washington State. And as we do that, doing our best to make sure that we're centering individual students' needs, not compliance, that we're addressing and calling out impacts on BIPOC students and families, especially Black and Latinx communities, centering students and families and the impacts on small districts. So I'll have more updates on that as that group continues to do their work. Elevating community voice in board decisions, board work, so at the last board meeting, I had shared out a variety of common sense ideas, and that these strategies include practices resulting from the barriers as a result from COVID, but also just best practices from our colleagues across the state, or really our county, within our county, of what's working and how do we create more access of the work that we do and transparency with our communities. And so I believe it's this meeting or the next meeting, but like, one of these meetings, we're going to be considering adopting multiple of these common sense and inclusive practices. I wanted to share out, the Puget Sound Transformational Collaborative had the opportunity, I was invited to participate with this group, they're doing awesome work. I had shared out a resource to the board about sort of a playbook that actually, actually folds in well nicely with our racial equity process tool. And so this group continues to build relationships and really get to know what other districts are doing, I had a chance to meet amazing parents from other districts, they develop opportunities to increase our progress and how we are monitoring the impact. So this isn't just learning about it, but this is how we're applying it and how we're monitoring it and putting it into action. Identifying strategies for collaborative thought partnership and family-school partnerships. And so just wanted to share that with you. Also attended the Highline College Bachelors of Teaching Early Education Para-Educator Advisory Board, and so had a chance to share and hear about the good work that our educators and educators in training are up to, and have a couple contacts here. The programs are looking for more placements and that our partnerships aren't just, you know, creating them but maintaining them, and hopefully if there are possibilities for more paraeducators and teaching opportunities, there can be connections made there. So I have John Pizarro and Patricia McDonald's contact information as folks, and I also reached out to them and gave district contact information for them as well. This past month, I have the opportunity to join with different parents here in Tuck Willa, and there's strong interest in a family network, a network really with Foster and Showalter because that there is a bit of a bridge there between those schools, so looking at ways to unite families, let's see here, better ways to engage, celebrate success, they talked about booster clubs, really identity and sense of belonging that families feel more welcomed and the sense of belonging in those schools too. The King County Redistricting Commission, so I'm moving on, so currently, King County is looking at three plans that potentially impact Tuck Willa, and so right now, it's all in discussion, and they're doing public hearings and gathering feedback, but depending on what plan gets approved, we may end up changing or splitting our district. So looking at, and the districts that could be impacted are District Two, District Five, and District Eight, so there could be potential there. So if anyone's interested, I encourage folks to definitely look into it, it will impact who our representatives are, in terms, in King County Council, representation. Had a chance to listen in on the Tuck Willa, City of Tuck Willa Equity and Social Justice Commission, that they have open positions with stipends for scholars from the Tuck Willa School District. One of the, there was recruitment happening from Foster, yet heard from Showalter that there might be students interested there, so I put out a question if that was even possible, so to find out if that would be open to Showalter students as well. And then also, interest at the city level about a Build the Bridge initiative, so in other parts of King County, BIPOC leaders have developed a network of, a leadership network to encourage additional BIPOC leaders to actually step up and serve on boards, serve on commissions, look at elected office, because that is a huge barrier, there's lots of barriers that keep folks from, that keep folks out. And so really looking at some intentional intervention there, and that has been done, there's interest in possibly bringing it into Tuck Willa. We completed our board self-assessment, and I'm sure that other directors might mention some of this, but I think the piece that I'll share is that really looking at the transparency and how our board does business, and so after doing the self-assessment, was able to look at the Federal Way School District, they actually post their self-assessments, and they have for years, on their website so that anybody can look and see how they're thinking they're doing, because the self-assessment is us deciding how we're doing, and also just sort of bring that up, because how do we really know what we're doing if we're not asking for assessment or evaluation from those communities and people that we serve? Finally, had an opportunity to meet with Sound Discipline, and it was a collaboration at the Tuck Willa Children's Foundation, and got to hear some great work that's happening in our district, and so in general, right now, some of the professional development that Sound Discipline is doing for our schools and community partners include the social-emotional ruler rollout, there's also some work being done on trauma response practices, and then family advocacy and discipline systems, in fact, there's some upcoming trainings for parents on how to advocate for your youth, and so I'm planning on trying to participate in some of those. They do parent and caregiver workshops, they're doing mindful mentors, or have done, mindful mentors at Foster High School and Tuck Willa Elementary, and then, this was the one that really got me excited, a group of educators and scholars coming together and really looking at pedagogy and how we teach, and really kind of flipping it. And this group called Doing Our Own Learning, the students were collaborators with teachers, they were looking at how to take action and solidarity in groups and liberation through storytelling, discussing oppression, youth running the professional development of staff, how about that for our district? Youth leadership, voice in decisions, transforming school culture, and then some of the feedback from educators is that they've had a mind shift to really recognize that. that, that our edu, that our scholars are educators as well and decolonizing educators. So that's what I've got. There's amazing work happening. Really excited in terms of the healing process, hopefully from this pandemic and what can happen out in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Lots of good information there. Will your document be posted with the minutes so that people can access those? Okay, there we go. That's how you'll access that if you want to look at those citations that Bridget has given us. You know, I asked folks when I made this invitation to the directors to say something about their district and I forgot about mine. So District Two, just as an update, District Two is my district and it's on the west side of the highway. I'm the only one on the west side of International Boulevard. And my property where I live is actually adjacent to Cascade View, just so in case you're trying to locate me anytime. Let's move on to District Four, and that would be Director Morris.
Well, I got to attend the Foster Art Dedication on the nineteenth. What a beautiful piece of art. And it was interesting to hear her describe the process and her thought behind the piece that she created. The CTE meeting, wow, I cannot be any more impressed with all that the committee has accomplished. And I'm looking forward to the next meeting. Hopefully I can get in this time with a little help from Jason. I just, yeah, those meetings I learned so very much from. I've attended some webinars on communication, COVID and youth. And will be attending Thursday, the, some tools on SEL. I did a little bit of door bailing and at which time I got to communicate with some community members about the district, which was very informative. And I've been trying to visit some of the schools. The students seem pleased to be back in the classroom. The staffs seem very tired, but positive. So, that's it. Oh, and my district is around Thorndike.
Thank you, Director Morris. Good work. And Director Larson.
Thank you. So I'm District Five, which is generally around Tukwila Elementary as well as the commercial district and part of McBacon Heights, south of the highway, the airport to the freeway to the highway. So, and I'm kind of right in, the house is right in the middle of that district, a few blocks from Tukwila Elementary. So that's District Five. First of all, I wanted to just start off, so this is National Principals Month. And I just wanted to say thank you to all of our principals, building administrators who've been obviously kept the, you know, it's been a hugely challenging times keeping the buildings open and operating efficiently with all the COVID restrictions and so forth and so on. So I just want to give a big thank you to all the building administrators who are doing an incredible job keeping, keeping the district running on the ground at the building level. The second thing I wanted to just talk about was the building, having the buildings open has allowed several of the programs that really couldn't be done at all or very well to now start up again. And so I've been for many years working with the students at Cascade View and robotics. So the robotics program is, is up and running again. And now with the buildings open, after a couple of years, we have the full creative learning labs with fully staffed and operational at all the elementary schools, which is great. It took us a couple of years to get that going, but it's, it's, it's really good. And I've been really impressed with the students in robotics. They're actually kind of more advanced than we've seen for a number of years. And part of the reason for that is that we have the, the full-time teacher up there who's, who's working in the creative learning labs and got them working on coding during the COVID when they were doing it at home. And so they're, they're quite comfortable coding, which is something that I haven't seen for, for a few years. So anyway, it's great to have that. And also, you know, some of the other programs on the arts side, the choir, the orchestra, the music, the theater, all these programs that just, you know, we're not, don't work very well or at all with, in remote things are able to start up again. And, and the students are getting back together and socializing and working together and all those great things. So it's really been great to, you know, see the buildings open and, and all these, all these great programs that we've had are, are cranking up again. Let's see, I did attend an interesting seminar called High Dosage Tutoring. It was put on by the Regional Education Labs. These are labs around the country that are sponsored by the Federal Department of Education and they do research in different strategies and so forth. And this was sponsored out of the, the lab back on the East Coast. But they presented a lot of evidence that, you know, what they call high dosage tutoring has a significant impact in terms of accelerating learning. So I think that's, that's one of the strategies that I hope we can consider when we're talking about spending ESSR dollars and so forth. It sounds like a really good approach. I mean, it has to be done well. And the seminar kind of laid out, you know, what the criteria was, which I'd be happy to share with anybody to see what, you know, what kind of makes up a good tutoring program. I wanted to just talk about a couple of things, policy issues that I think we should be looking at. One of them was mentioned by Director Poe Ryder. And that is the school naming policy. So we have a policy. I think it's sixty-nine seventy that talks about naming schools and facilities. And first case, in first situation, because of the bill that Director Poe Ryder mentioned, that, that policy is now out of date. We need to upgrade that policy and include the Westmore policy is already there, ready to go. And, but in addition to that, I just reading through it, it talks about, you know, what schools should be named for, you know, persons who have attained national and local prominence and so forth and so on. I think, I think we really should be looking at that to see if, I mean, I think there's a wider range of things that we should be looking at. And that, so that whole policy I think needs to be reviewed, not only because it's out of date and we need to make it up in alignment with current law, but also look at that whole, that whole issue of how we name schools and, and so forth and so on. And it's, anyway, there's a particular, obviously, the, the, the Thorndike School mascot is the one of primary, immediate concern because it relates to tribal references. But we might think about that whole area, I think, would be good in the context of that particular policy. The other one that I think we should be examining in this, there's a whole movement going on in the, in the state around mastery-based learning. And I think that when I was looking at our policies related to mastery-based learning, there's a series of them, starting in twenty-four oh-two and going, there's one for English language, one for math, one for so and so on. And one of the things that I think is missing, there was, when I looked at the, the the model policies from WASDA, there's reference in there to kind of evaluating, doing the, looking at it with a race and equity lens. So, and getting reports to the board based on that. And that paragraph is kind of missing from our policies on that issue. And I think it's, you know, that's, that paragraph is fully in line with, I think, what our race and equity policy is. So anyway, I think that's another one we need to yeah, it says, to ensure cultural responsiveness and equity and awarding mastery-based credit, the district will collect annually reviewed disaggregated data. So anyway, that's, that's something I, so anyway, those two sets of policies, I think, I would request that we pull those and take a look at and review them and bring them up to date. And let's see, what else did I have? Okay. The one other thing I was, so we have scheduled for, I guess it'd be next week now, a visit with Representative Hackney. So I just wanted to check, Dr. Herndon, do we, what I, the only thing I need, we have the, the date, but I think we, what I need to be able to do, convey to them is a room, specific room where they, you know, we can, we can start somewhere and move to another room, however you want to do that. But I just, I guess I just, and I don't need it right now, but you know, soon, that's, I can convey to them Representative Hackney and maybe the other representatives. I haven't heard back from them yet, but they decide they want to come. Kind of what room to go to, whether it's, you know, the boardroom in the admin building or Foster or wherever you want to start that.
Yeah, the only thing I'll need is just confirmation on how many people, because then we'll know what kind of size room. You know, a larger number, then we'll take a look at it. But if I know a max size, then I can find a room, no problem.
Yeah, I guess so, kind of to talk about the work, the most people make him. So if Representative Hackney and his maybe staff member came and let's be optimistic and say, you know, a couple of the other representatives and Senator maybe can send theirs. So that would be maybe another six. And then myself and Director Poe Ryder and that's eight. And then however many staffs, you know, you've either staff, students, parents, whatever. So it'd be, you know, I didn't, however many of those you have lined up. So I'm thinking, you know, maybe twelve to fifteen, something like that.
Yeah, I'll find a room that's just, it's big enough and we can have enough space for everybody.
And is there a way that other board members can attend if they wish?
Well, then we'd have to notice it, which I guess that's a interesting question, because then you could open it, would it be open up to everybody? And whether, I mean, it's okay with me, but I guess I'd probably have to check with the representatives to see if they would want to do that.
Okay, thank you.
So anyway, yeah, so Director, if you get that to me in a day or two or something, then I could, can get back with the, with them and give them a particular time. Do, I don't know, do we, how are we doing? Do we have some folks lined up for? So I'm thinking this agenda is going to be, you know, he wants to talk about legislative priorities, which we'll talk about here later tonight. So I can start with that. And then, you know, I have the, I'm assuming the bulk of it will be, you know, either staff, students, community or whatever, talking about mental health.
Yeah, I mean, as, as soon as we get the timeframe down, I'll try and get as many people there as we can or get some representative folks there, staff and students and parents.
So we've got it. I think it's eleven to one on November third. Is that, I think that's what it was.
Yeah, the timing will just probably limit the availability of students because it's thirty.
Well, the other thing is, I, we've done this in the past. I mean, you know, we can have students, either we can go up to Foster or whatever, and they can come in for ten or fifteen minutes and do their thing. And, you know, so they don't need to necessarily be there for the whole time, but however you want to work that as well.
Yep.
Okay. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Dave. Let's move on to the consent agenda. I believe that's what the heading is. There is an ad, I don't have, yes. Is there a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If you approve the consent agenda, say yes. And if you don't say no, all right, it has been approved. Board discussion. We have two items on board discussion. WASDA General Assembly Legislative Priority Ranking and Tukwila School District twenty-twenty-two Legislative Priorities. Dave, are you leading this conversation?
Yes. So thanks. The, so the last meeting, we, we looked at all the, this is for the voting at the General Assembly, WASDA School Directors Association General Assembly, which is going to be this Friday and Saturday. And I got input from a couple of the directors in terms of, you know, the, the ones that they were thinking should be a priority. It turns out, as a district, we get to rank the top fifteen. There are, just to give you some context, there's about a hundred and twenty positions altogether. So any of these that appear are kind of top higher priority. And so I have listed here a, if you can bring that up, Debbie, the yeah, the priority ones, yeah. Maybe make it a little bigger if you can. Yeah. So I have listed here, I, I took all the ones that I got, plus the ones that I had and put them in. There was about seventeen of them. So there's two over. Occasionally, it doesn't happen very often, but occasionally, one of the positions will get voted down at the assembly. So they always say, well, you know, have a couple spare in case something gets voted down. I think it's unlikely that any of the ones that we have in the top fifteen would get voted down. But anyway, I just listed a couple spares. And the reason I put the spares one, so number seventeen is increased funding for high poverty schools. That's one I put, I submitted years ago and got passed. That one is largely covered in some of the ones at the top now. It's gradually kind of filtered into some of the other positions that WASDA has allocated over the years. This idea that, you know, the higher poverty schools should get more. So that's why I kind of put that one down at the bottom. And then the other one linking graduation requirements to career pathways, that's kind of covered under the mastery-based learning, which is number twelve. And so that's why I kind of, you know, these, these positions all kind of morph over the years. And so anyway, that's why I put that one on the bottom. But, and the other general thing I, I usually do when I look at these rankings is I put the funding ones toward the top because that's the, I mean, these are legislative positions. So the, that's the legislature's primary job. I mean, they can't go home unless they do a budget. And the constitution says it's their, it's their paramount duty to, you know, aptly fund K-12 education. So I tend to put the funding ones toward the top. But anyway, I, so I think I've covered what people have talked, I'm, I'm happy to, you know, if people want to move some around, you know, that's fine. But this, this is the proposed list that I put together. And, you know, like I say, if so, if, if, if people want to have, you know, want to move some up or down, you know, I'm, I'm open to that, which we can do now, or you can do it, send it to me later, whatever. So I guess I'm just looking for, you know, does this look reasonable to people? Or do you want to make any, any particular changes to it before I go?
I'm, I'm just curious about fifteen, attract, recruit, retain diverse school board directors. I, I'm shocked that that's there. I mean, first and foremost, I'd want that, the direct board of director just to be substituted by our educators. But that, I, I, I don't know whoever selected that one. I don't, I think I selected, you know, diverse educators
Yeah.
as a priority area.
See if I can remember who, whether.
I know that in last year's ledge session, there was quite a bit done in terms of recognizing the need for
Yeah, I think, yeah, I got that from your list, so.
Maybe that was a mistake. So
Okay.
Don't, I mean, don't get me wrong, there definitely is a need here
Yeah, yeah.
to improve.
Yeah.
You know, and at the same time, I think that, I think that our, us board directors have to step aside and make sure our educators are, have, are on the list.
So I, there is actually one, I'm, you know, there is, I know there is one really, really just specifically for educators. And I'm, I would be happy I'm I would be happy to. I can't find it right off the top of my head, but I will go find that one. And I can put that one in there in place. I'm happy to do that.
Last year, there was momentum that has been done in terms of looking at representation and elected office and. Other, but still it's there's such a deficit of and there's so many structural barriers for educators of color. So what ends up resulting is a lack of educators of color. And so we really have a lot of work to do. And and with people serving in office for sure and on our board.
Yeah, okay, I'll go I'll go find that one and. Put it in there. Any other? Thoughts, comments? If not, then that's what I'll do. And we can. Go on to the next. Subject. Which is, if you can bring that one up, Debbie. So I took a a shot at so every year I do the. Kind of the legislative priorities. And normally I do them a little. Closer to the session, so I can get a sense of what's going on, what people are doing, talking about in the session, but. I since Representative Hackney wanted to see ours and we're doing that next week, I I wanted to just refresh. So I took last year's which. And refresh them a little bit. Yeah, they're there. So. They aren't erratic. They aren't very different from last year. But again, if there's any. Changes that. In sequencing, last year we kind of moved up. Well, oh, there it is. Yeah, there it is. Actually, number four, support for diversified educational staff. That one is and I'll go. Yeah, that's a bill that Senator Hasagawa has. And so I'll go. Find that this these are. Not nice. Most of these have 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 some kind of legislative position on them. So. But. Looking to see. Yeah, I think about, I mean, I eliminated. One we had last year was provide flexibility and consistency in transportation funding for districts. And that was kind of that was taken care of. So. But. Yeah, so I didn't. Are there any? Any? Things that stand out? People want to? Change this or something that's missing or I did. Debbie, if you go to the the bottom and the last, actually, it's on the next page. Yeah, keep going. Yeah, there. So I added this little thing. This isn't really part of formerly part of the legislative priorities, but. Since Representative Hackney is on the Capitol Budget Committee, as a matter of fact, he's the co-chair of the Capitol Budget Committee and. These are funds that the state allocates every year for various capital projects around the state and. In talking with. Liliana, our our facilities person. You know, she was she had the idea of, you know, maybe we could ask for some of some money to upgrade the PAC. Performing Arts Center, you know, that's a good community base, not just the school district, but also the community uses it. So those are the kind of projects. And I wa- I just wanted to pass these by Representative Hackney to see, you know, if any of these could. Might meet the whatever their. Criteria for selecting them. And then. Lea Liliana also said that upgrade. The main kitchen at Showalter. And then I threw on, you know, early learning spaces potentially, if we could put together some. Some of these would require some work to get some proposal. And then the last one I had there was the. It's interesting, the safety upgrades for the South Hundred and Forty Fourth Street Bridge. That's the one that crosses I five and. We have lots of students going across that bridge. And I believe we haven't. I don't know if Dr. Hernan, you've heard anything from the city about that one, but. That may be an issue that the State Department of Transportation would be responsible for. But. Anyway, I put I threw these in there just simply because Representative Hackney is on the Capitol Budget Committee and we might be able to get. You know, his attention on some of them, so. I don't know, Dr. Hernan, if you had any conversations with the city on that particular issue at all?
No, I just had a recent conversation with them, but it was kind of more around the other issue that we have coming up later in the agenda. I didn't talk much about the. Bridge piece, but I'll. You know, they they did mention another possible. Speed camera in a school zone up on one forty-fourth. Or forty-fourth, so we'll we'll see. But yeah, I the bridge stuff is always kind of or the overpass stuff is kind of tricky. Just because it does go over I five, so it's. You know, it's whose territory is it? Is it the city territory? Is it technically the state? Because it goes over there. But I'll try and clarify with them. So hopefully I can have an update at the next month.
Yeah, so these are just to kind of, you know, I'd like to get a feel from Representative Hackney about what he, you know, since he's in the middle, he's the vice chair now. This is the first time we've had somebody on that committee. So I'd like to kind of explore what some possibilities are. And and then we could, you know, explore other things potentially as well. But. So anyway, that's.
Seeing something here. Is there anything with mental health and wellness here for this upcoming ledge session?
So it's kind of. I guess. I might need to bring it out more, but. Student based funding for education support staff. So this is for counselors, nurses, social workers, psychologists, parent involvement coordinators, all of those folks. So that's kind of where that. In terms of funding. Now, if you got some other ideas for funding in that area.
Right. So just, I mean, in the past year, being part of those ledge conversations. And thinking about funding that's coming up, there's a big bulk piece of funding coming up that. That could potentially go towards mental health and wellness. And here's the other thing. This was the big aha moment in a meeting I attended last night. Listening to folks talk about, you know, what is considered a disability. So when we start talking about sped funding as well. That when you think about learning disorders, when you think about autism or spectrum, when you think about ADHD, other types of neurocognitive. Challenges and disorders, traumatic brain injury. These are all mental health issues. These are also mental health issues. And so that that really, I find that we have these conversations that we talk about these things being like separate. And there are nuances. Don't get me wrong, but there's also a lot of and and so some of the conversations that I'm starting to hear about now. Especially from other districts is really looking at interventions, evidence based interventions such as, you know, expert, right? Like, we're doing that somewhat in our district, but in terms of, that's just one type of intervention that is looking at preventing. And identifying risk factors for mental health. So not just the more severe end of things, but catching it earlier. And I just in our in our district, I'm I'm not aware of us being proactive, like, we're just like, you know, hire some people. And that's like, that's not how you create. Mental health and wellness, like you create it by doing different interventions. And so I just, I I think that that is a huge. It's a huge issue right now. And if we're going to advocate for funding, to me, that's that's one that we should definitely be doing, at least for this year. Given that I I see other districts planning on doing that. And I'm sure it'll come out in the assembly as well.
Yeah, so I guess. To some degree, some of the what you're describing is it sounds like it's something that as a district we can do. I mean, we don't. We don't need the necessarily, I mean, the state funding could help. Implement it, but we could do that ourselves, correct?
Well, the districts that I've seen that have implemented it have had gotten funding and have, I mean, it it costs money to make things like that.
Right. And where did they? Are they getting grants? Or are they get or where are they getting?
That's, you know, that I don't know. I don't have all that information, but I just have seen other districts do far more. To to do preventative work and just a culture of health and wellness. And experts just one type. I mean, there's other things too.
Right. Yeah, so I, you know, I to me, that's. It sounds like that's something, you know, that we can do internally. I mean, if other districts are doing that, we can do. And so it's it's less of a legislative. Priority per se, it's more of a priority for us to do go do that stuff. Is that?
I think you're probably just a lot like we're doing with sound discipline. I'm guessing that a lot of that additional staff is coming in the form of grants or additional funds outside funders that go to that. I I would guess that. You know, there's there's just more trying to meet a lot of the basic needs that we have through the prototypical typical school model, which isn't even funded adequately. To begin with. So most districts are supplementing that with their local levies. And then they're probably doing the this additional piece through partnerships and additional foundation. Work or grant. So I mean, we can always continue to try and look for those avenues as well. But I think it's I would almost guarantee it's additional dollars somewhere and probably not just the ship that the resources they currently have. But all of that's in support of students and as Director Poe Ryder was saying, I mean. I think early intervention is always more one, more effective. And two, just better. To be able to, you know, address the needs and identify those earlier in in students and for families. So. I mean, I support all those pieces.
So, yeah, I mean, I agree. So from the legislator, I mean, they can, you know, provide the dollars for these folks. And then we have to decide how to best implement that, basically, you know, how to best use those folks. That's that's kind of on us. At least the way I think about it.
Yeah, I mean, again, I think that, you know, well, part of the conversations we've had is area superintendents is that there's. An allocation of money for a lot of those different positions that you've talked about, none of which are fully funded. So. People are deciding a few of those things and deciding to fully fund some of them rather than kind of the peanut butter approach where you're just doing. Partial of each one of those, which probably won't make nearly as much of a dent. So then you go outside for additional grants and foundation pieces that help fill in the the other gaps. So I think. The legislative priority by saying, yeah, and we need more additional dollars. I mean, there's lots of things that. Olympia doesn't fully fund. I saw on the list, you also have Seb, which they're not fully funding. That's hundreds of thousands of dollars that we as a district are paying because of that, which could otherwise be used for some of these items that we just talked about.
I think my question along these lines. That you're bringing up to us, is this a culture shift? Is this a PD? For all of our folks to be aware and have the tools? Or is this a program? And maybe that's a bigger discussion of how do we address the mental health issues or the. Trauma issues that we're seeing. And what are the best ways? And if if someone has seen other districts doing different things, then. Maybe we look at that and see, is it a culture shift? Is it a a PD education kind of thing? Or is it bringing in? Certain staff. And any of those. Are possibilities? Does that that make sense to you, Bridget?
Yeah, I it's complicated, right? There's multiple factors. At last year's WASDA conference, there was a breakout session on how a district is addressing the increased suicide risk. And suicide in their district. And the year before that, there was expert and how that's being done to identify. Possible depression, anxiety, substance use and things like that. And so there's these different, I mean, this is not new. This is no surprise. These are things that are other districts have been working on. And really just kind of recognizing that that in this pandemic, there's been a lot of mental health needs. There still is mental health needs and our and there's been trauma, stress, loss, grief and loss. All kinds of things that have and continue to happen. And so. Kind of recognizing that I just I just I just want to make sure, I mean, I from what I'm hearing, listening to other districts and people out in the community. This is going to be a kind of a hot item. And so really thinking about how we. Position ourselves to pivot and be able to, I see a connection there with sped funding, definitely. Recognizing that we we have more people with more needs that are out there and we. Are we advocating for them to get identified? And how are we doing that? How are we, you know, it's kind of moving away from compliance. To centering what student needs are. And and mental health is part of that as well.
And and one of my questions would be, do we know what we're already doing? Do we know what our staff is already doing? I'm not sure as a director, I know what we already have in place. So it could just be collecting that information. As a start. To find out that. We're actually doing a lot of the things that maybe other districts are doing too. If. If we are done with section six, Dave, is there anything else you needed to bring us? I think what you offered us, Director Go Ryder, would be a further conversation about this. Is that right?
Yeah, if if, I mean, if you can think of something that you want the legislature specifically to do. You know, I'm happy to put it in here. I know the legislator, legislature in general is working on the whole issue of mental health, not just with students. But across the board and how the state implements mental health and, you know, that all the people that you need to do that. And it's it is working on the big picture as well. So. You know, if you can give me any kind of wording or phrasing that you want, you know, I can certainly put that in here around that.
I mean, we can also wait until the General Assembly and see what other, I mean, once we start listening to other districts. The themes will become apparent, right?
All right, thank you for bringing all of that before us. Let's move on to section seven, questions only presentations. Folks, do you have questions that you want to bring on any of these topics, A through D? Bridget, do you have any you want to bring up? Okay, Edna, do you have any?
Nope.
And Dave?
I got something on A and C.
Okay, and I don't have. Any, so go ahead with A, please, Dave.
Okay, so. For, I guess, our. CFO, Ms. Birdsong. I was interested in. So on the ending fund balance bridge. There was this entry. Entitled targeted COVID nineteen nineteen relief. And. So you indicated that was. Reduction in funding due to not fully expending the grant. So I guess my question is always. Was this something that? That we were allocated in S R one and just simply didn't? Were not able to spend it by the deadline? Is that what this is?
Correct. So it is the actual revenue that we got from, well, the actual expenditures plus. The indirects that we got from COVID dollars. So we didn't lose that funding. We just did not. Spend the one point three. It was more along the one point two range that. Variance about a hundred and twenty-four thousand is available now through twenty. I would have to look at my spreadsheet to see when it. When S R one. Sunsets, but we still have those dollars available in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Oh, okay. So this so this money still can be spent.
Absolutely. I just wanted to get more accurate, more up to date.
Okay, God, I just wanted to make sure we weren't leaving money on the table. Okay, that's great. And. Let's see, the enrollment report. That one, I was kind of. Curious about. It looks like, you know, most of the when we're comparing twenty-one to twenty, most of the reduction is in. The elementary grades. And I was on a. A WASDA call and they were, this is an informal survey. They were talking about, you know, across this, I think fifty. You know, across, this is, I think, fifty districts were represented across the state. And they asked the question. You know, where are the students that are not, I mean, as you've indicated before, this is not unique to our district. It's happening in every district. And the question was, where are these students? And, you know, I think the answer came back like sixty-five percent. And this is not, you know, this is not scientific, but a lot of them, they said homeschool. So. My question is kind of. You know, I, I've heard a lot of stories that parents of the elementary students are keeping them home because they're waiting for the vaccine. And so they may be homeschooling or whatever. And once that vaccine is available, then. They may, you know, very well come back. And so the question is kind of. You know, do you have any evidence that that may be the issue? In which case, you know, are we kind of prepared for? You know, if the vaccine starts in November and then a couple of months later, after, you know, a lot of students get it, are we going to get a wave of? Students, you know, descending on our buildings? And are we prepared to kind of handle that is, is the, is the question.
Yeah, I mean, I think part of that, there probably is that possibility, but the thing on the comparisons. Um, one of the ways to really look at the comparisons of the sheets is not. What I look at more on the enrollment reports is the um cohort. So when I look at kindergarten from twenty, I'm looking at first grade from twenty-one. So I'm moving over one column as I'm doing that to see what our retention is of students. That tells me a little bit more about where folks are. And that can somewhat um. Make you a, aware of any continuing dips in a particular class of students that might come in. So you might have a low class or a really high class. You might get a bubble of enrollment that comes in. Um, so if you look at that, there are a couple of areas. You know, K one, we already knew that was going to be kind of low. First, the second grade, you know, that's, that's kind of a drop. But if you look at some of those others, you're talking about. You know, anywhere between five and five and ten at a particular moving from one to the other. I think you might be right. Um, the five to eleven vaccine may change some of that enrollment. But again, because it's spread out kind of over all the grades, we'll probably okay, be okay for size or for space. So I'm not anticipating that or a hu, excuse me, a huge rush. But we'll see. Um, as I uh kind of reported in the uh weekly memo to everybody. The Puget Sound area in general is down, you know, between one and two percent statewide. It's much larger. You know, four to five percent statewide. So there are some places that definitely are, have taken a big hit. There are a couple of districts though, around even in King County that are slightly up. Um, but again, I think a lot of it, you know, COVID and the response to being back in person and vaccination is certainly one. And again, just even the increase in housing over the last year is also an impact on families. You know, as they're continuing to move, continuing to find affordable space to live, whether it be rent or whatever that may be. Um, you know, as, as uh eviction moratoriums kind of sunset, that may have an impact on a lot of families. As they try and find more affordable housing. So there are a lot of factors we're taking a look at for enrollment to just see where we are. Um, but it's a good point and we will certainly keep track of it. I think as we. Look at the five to eleven, once we start having those vaccine clinics, we'll definitely kind of collect some data. Now, obviously not on the individual students, but just kind of in general, how many. In that age range are coming to get vaccines, knowing that all of them might not be our own students, but at least, you know, they're probably. Within the community if they're coming there because it's of the proximity.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all.
Is that the end of the questions in that section?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, we move to action items then. Uh, we need to uh motion on approval of the human resources staffing report.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If you approve this report, say yes.
Yes.
All right, and I think I heard four yeses. Um, the approval of park leases. Can I have a motion on that one?
Still moved.
Second.
All right, is there a discussion on this one?
So my only um question on this one is, um. When I was looking at the contract, um. So the city would have the um opportunity to make any improvements. Um. To the property that relate to recreation and park purposes. My only question is, I mean, they haven't done this, but could they put like some major building? On one of these properties, kind of, and it says they can do these things without. Without district approval. Is that? An issue, do you think?
Uh, I, so I would be surprised. I haven't been in any lease conversations. Uh, that includes the work that I used to do in Seattle where the lease. Uh, the person uh who's under the lease does capital improvements without consultation. Uh, to the property owner. So I don't think that would be the case. And the only project I've heard uh the city mention is possibly. You know, um, an all-weather, an all-season turf field. Um, I don't think they're interested in doing any buildings. And if they were to do that, um, we obviously have the language in the contract that says we could terminate. Uh, the lease if we need it for educational purposes. So, I mean, they would kind of run the risk of.
Right.
Building a building and then us basically owning the building.
Right.
Um, so we, we do need warehouse space. Um, so if they were to build something and we had something then. Um, but I, we have a good relationship. There are no surprises that they've been talking about. And I couldn't see them kind of going through that process without us knowing about something like that. So.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good. I mean, it took, I'm the only one I'm aware of. So on Foster Park, they put on, they, they have a. You know, a restroom facility there, but that's, that's fine. I mean, yeah, so, okay, as long as they're comfortable with that, that's good.
I was wondering, when we get something like this before us that uh. Needed to go to the attorneys, which one of, one of you pointed out that we needed an attorney uh counsel on this. Could we as directors get that document that says? The attorneys are okay with this. Um, as an attachment when we get these.
So usually the language reflects the attorney language that they've changed. So usually that's what you'll see in the markup is any strike throughs. Those are the changes. That the attorneys have made to the actual document. There's not a separate document. Where they, you know, like a separate attorney narrative that would go with this. The document reflects the work of the attorneys. Both from the city and the school district.
Okay.
Does that, uh, uh, it does, uh, I want to make sure I'm answering the question if I'm hearing it.
No, you, you're absolutely answering the question. Um. I'm just wondering how we know that that was the attorneys that did it and it wasn't an internal.
Oh, yeah, so the only, um, this had come up before and we had. Um, and we had changed this. This was actually on a past agenda. And we had talked about that it needed further refinement from our attorney and the city attorney. And so that's what uh this was reflecting, were the changes in that. So.
Yeah.
Um, I can, in the future, if we have something like that, we can put that in the memo that. This has gone through legal review and has been approved or something like that. We can come up with language like.
Yeah, that, that sounds great to me.
Okay, I think, I agree. That would, that would be really helpful on these things rather than just, you know, here's the agreement and have no idea what the process that you went through to get there. Cause that's, that's relevant. So, yeah, a memo just describing the process would be great.
Great. We can include that in the future.
Great.
But just for reference, this did get legal review, uh, both from our side and the city side.
Great, thank you. Any more discussion on? Park leases. If you are uh agreeable to approve this, please say yes.
Yes.
And if you are not, say no.
Yes.
All right. And uh approval of the CTE five-year plan. Wow, what an extensive plan, Mr. Baker. That's amazing. Um, do, can I have a motion?
I still moved that we. We.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
So the one. The one question I wanted to, um, was interested in the, kind of the race and equity analysis of this. And so, um, the numbers that came back were the, you know, percentage of CD concentrators uh by. Um, racial group, which is, um, that's interesting data. It's. I would like, whenever these kind of numbers come back by data, what's more informative rather than just straight percentages, the proportions. So in other words, um. How many of, uh, you know, students relative to the number of students in the total population? So we can see proportionalities or disproportionality. And, you know, when I kind of went through and did that numbers, it's. So it's interesting that the uh higher proportionality ends up to be. Uh, Pacific Islander Latinx students and uh two or more races. And so, you know, the way I'm looking at this is. You know, the, the CT programs are kind of um different ways of getting um degrees in education. Than the normal way we've been doing it, which, you know, has lots of problem, the current way has lots of problems with disproportionality. Um, you know, with black Latinx Pacific Islander students. And so what this says to me is that. It's, it's good because the groups that were um kind of on the disproportionately on the low end. With the regular system are kind of being better served, hopefully, with uh this particular approach. And so, um, I think this is, this is good data to see. Um, on the good side, on the flip side, we have to make sure that these programs, and I know that's not the intention of them, but. That these programs are not kind of um lower academic programs so that, you know, students are taking, uh, you know. Not as academically rigorous a program. And so I think, um, as we go through this. I think we will need to be tracking, uh, you know, whether, to make sure that the students that go through these programs are in fact. Um, getting a high-quality education, rigorous education, so that they can go out and find great jobs and so forth. And, you know, the, the state ERDC will be tracking that maybe seven or eight years from now. When they see where the students have landed. But um, hopefully we'll get something and this may, and I don't have the answer to this, but. You know, some kind of an external audit to make sure that these programs that we're putting, you know, students that have been historically underserved into. At a greater percentage are in fact high-quality programs that are producing those students with great jobs and so forth. So anyway, that's just, um, just a comment when I'm, I, I think we need to be following this to make sure that. Uh, these programs are in fact producing, you know, um. Uh, our, our high-quality academically rigorous programs as, as we go through here. I'm, I'm really encouraged by, um, you know, what I see so far, but I think we just, it's just something that I think we'll need to keep an eye on. So that was just a comment. Thanks.
Dave, can you give me an example of one of the classes that you think isn't academically?
No, I haven't, I have no evidence that any of them are not academically. I just, I just want to, I don't, I don't have any evidence one way or the other at this point. And so I just want to, I just want to see some evidence, um, as we go forward. I mean, a lot of these programs are just starting up. And so I just want to see evidence going forward that they are, you know, producing great results for the students. That's all.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Anything else anybody wants to bring up about this?
I just like appreciation for the hard work that the whole committee has put into this.
Yes.
And the community members that have participated and offered services. It's really a tremendous effort.
Well, if there's no more discussion, I'll call for a vote. If you approve the CTE five-year plan, please say yes.
Yes.
And if you do not, say no. It has been approved. See no other agenda for this evening. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn? Any discussion? All right, if you are in favor of adjournment, say yes.
Yes.
And if you are not, say no. All right, we are adjourned. I want to thank everyone who's contributed um or who has witnessed tonight. Um, we have covered a lot of material and as always have a lot still to do. To make this school district everything that we want it to be for our students and staff. Please have a good evening and we'll see soon. Thanks a lot, everybody.
Bye.
Bye.